Okay, we'll get tonight's meeting underway here. ZBA of Thursday, January 15th. We have first on the agenda tonight, case number 15-01. And I believe are those applicants here tonight? Okay. Let me go ahead and read the legal notice, and we'll go from there. The zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the Selectman's Meeting Room at the Town Hall, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on Thursday, January 15th, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. on the petition of MBA Building Group, Alan Capanella, who seek a special permit under Section 6.3.8 of the zoning bylaws in order to construct a new single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot located in an S-20 district on the property located at 92 Curtis Street in Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abuttes list, except to say that the abuttes were notified, as were the following: Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department, Assessors' Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, North Reading, Woburn, Linfield, Stonemont, and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath. So if you think you may want to speak tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. So anybody who's going to speak or feel they'll speak on behalf of this case, yeah, this is the 92 Curtis. Just stand and I'll give you the oath. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Responses, I do.
I do.
Okay, thank you. The floor is yours. It looks like Mr. Sullivan is going to give the presentation. Okay, thank you.
For the record, my name's Jack Sullivan. I'm owner of the Sullivan Engineering Group. I'm here with the owners of MBA Building Group. And we're here tonight for a special permit for 92 Curtis Street. It's a 20,232 square foot lot. There's 100.11 feet of frontage. This is in the S-20 zoning district, so you're required to have 120 feet of frontage. This lot is in conformance, conforms to the S-20 zoning district in lot area, so the only thing we're short of is on frontage. There was an existing, single-family home that existed on this property. It has been demolished, as of the date of this hearing. But on the plot plan, you can see the location of where the existing home was. The applicants have proposed, they've torn down the existing home. They're proposing to build a four-bedroom, four-bedroom, story and a half new home with an attached two-car garage. The new home will be conforming to all aspects of the zoning bylaw. It meets the side yard setbacks, it meets the front yard setbacks, it meets the rear yards setbacks. The proposed lot coverage for this house is 11.73%, which is less than 25% maximum that's allowed in this zoning district. And what we tried to do is, we basically looked where the existing house location was, and we tried to basically match onto the existing location. It's in the same general location with the two-car garage, and we're basically going to use the existing curb cut to this property as well. What I should mention is, this lot is conforming lot, but it's also one of the larger lots in this neighborhood. The lot next door is basically about the same size. All the lots range from like 12,000 to 20,000 square feet in this neighborhood. The applicant is kind of caught in a little bit of a transitional area here. At town meeting in November, this type of application, once the Attorney General approves, it can be approved by Glenn. But with, that's, the Attorney General still hasn't ruled on if the town meeting vote will be allowed or not. We're assuming it will be. But just to move forward with this process, we're going through the zoning board tonight. We feel this house will fit in with the surrounding neighborhood. They made contact with the director abutte at 96 Curtis Street. They have support of that abutte in this case. I'm not sure if they have a letter or not, but they did talk to the neighbor next door. And I guess I'll open it up to any questions you might have on this project.
I'm an abutte too. I never got any notification of anything. This is the first notification I've ever received. I'm 84 Curtis Street.
Excuse me. You, first of all, you weren't sworn in, right?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Number two, I haven't opened it up to public comment yet. I will open it up to public comment. But we will take note that, you know, you have, you say you weren't located, notified. I'll check, we'll check the list here and see on now. Okay. What is, what was your address and name?
84 Curtis Street.
94.
84.
84.
I'm directly on the other side.
On the other side of it, from 96, I think it was, 98?
As you're looking at it, you see the abutte to the left-hand side.
Yeah, on the left-hand side, okay. But you should have been certainly notified and, well.
This is the first notice I've received.
Yep.
Before I'm here.
Okay. But we will open it up to public comment, and if you have any questions or anything, then you can ask that at that point, okay?
Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Glenn, do you have anything to add to this, you'd like to comment on?
No, it's a typical tear-down rebuild that does conform in all aspects to the current requirements, provided we get the special permit for the non-conforming lot. Jack is right. I believe the town clerk notified the Attorney General on 12/9.
Mm-hmm.
And he has to make a decision within 90 days.
Yeah.
So by the time we go through all the appeal period and everything on this, it's going to be about the same time period.
Okay, thank you. I'll love to say, I was a bit surprised, I know Jack noted that the existing, or was existing, the older dwelling on the lot has been demolished. You issued a demolition permit on that?
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
At that point, the contractor was contemplating building within the same footprint.
Ah.
So the bylaw says that if you can build within the same footprint, you can demolish it and rebuild on that.
Yes.
And they had second thoughts.
Subsequently.
So now they're back.
Changes, yeah.
So we can't, he can't build until we get the special permit, or until the Attorney General.
Sure.
Approves.
Sure.
So they could.
The recent bylaw. Okay, thank you.
And the builders realize they took a risk demolishing the building before this hearing, but as Glenn said, their ideas change as they want.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. David, any questions, comments on this particular?
I don't.
Please?
I don't have, I don't have any.
Okay.
Seems fairly straightforward to me.
Kathleen?
Same for me.
Same for you. Mr. Drimmer.
I noticed that in the rear of the lot, it drops off a fair amount. It appears that from the certified plot plan that you're going to come to the edge of that, it looks like you're going to have to do some filling or something.
Not really, actually. We're going to try to kind of keep the natural grades of the lot. Is that correct, Jack?
That's, that's correct.
It'll be a little bit, but not significant.
Looking at the.
It naturally drops now.
Right. And looking at the architectural plans, when I was viewing those, it appears that you have a walkout basement in the back.
We do. It might need, potentially, there may need to be a little curb cut out for the door.
Sure.
And then you take one step up. So until we exactly close, it's almost right there.
And then my other question would be to Glenn. Is this impacted in any way by Phil, by bringing in Phil?
Not for me directly. Before, before we can issue a foundation permit, the curb cut has to be approved through engineering. So the engineering will ask them for a spot elevation of the driveway at the street and at the garage, so they'll know then if there's any excessive grading.
Okay. And then my other question would revolve around the grade and the eventual height of the roof area. This would be one of the.
That's when, this new plan, we're about three feet large. I changed the pitch of the roof from a 12 to a 10. So the ridge point went down about approximately three feet.
So on the front elevation, he's 28 feet above grade.
No.
Right. So he's well below the 35.
Yeah. No, I was just, I was just wondering, because the other homes in the area, either side of it, are the small capes, so it looks substantially larger than the rest of it.
You tried to give it the illusion that it's a story and a half from the front, somewhat matching with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And to answer your question, John, the garage floor grade that I set, there'll be about a 1% pitch to the street. So water will drain to the street from the garage. We're going to utilize the existing curb cut, and I do have a note on the plan that we have to meet the DBW driveway standards. But there'll be positive pitch. It's not going to drain back towards the lot, it'll drain out to the street.
Those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you, John. Sally, any questions?
I see this is very straightforward, and I don't have a single question to ask.
Okay, thank you. My review of it, we looked at the, the, the house has been demolished. It looks like that was built around 1930. I assume the lot was laid out at the same time as that, and obviously it pre-dates zoning then. So this appears to be a legal, non-conforming lot with the 100-foot-plus frontage as opposed to the 120-foot. So I'd call it a legal, non-conforming lot on that. And let's see, yeah. And I noticed that too, Joe, with you, the proposed dwelling, I was looking at that. It, looking at it from the front, it looks like it's about one and a half stories, I guess you would consider it, if you were looking at it at the front. There's dormers coming out of it. It's similar to a, it looks like a Cape Cod style from the front with the dormers. And in that area, there was a number of Cape Cod-style houses. So I kind of looked at that and thought that it would fit into the neighborhood. It certainly doesn't appear to be substantially more detrimental than the existing structure.
That's what I liked about.
Yeah, I thought they did a good job with that, trying to fit that into it, the, similar like a Cape style to the front of it. And obviously, in the back, you go to the back, because the land slopes away, and the back does have the larger second floor to it. It's, you know, much, much larger from the back. From the front, it certainly looks like a Cape. Other than that, I don't have any issues with it. I will go ahead and open it up to public comment at this time. If there's anybody from the public who would like to comment, go ahead. This gentleman there before, now's your time.
I just, I can't see it.
Sure.
I'm curious what was going to be built next door.
Yeah. We checked the town logs here while we were talking. Mr. Drimmer was nice enough to do that, and certainly you were on the list to have received notice. Now, that's all we can say. You know, it certainly, they don't send them certified mail or anything like that to, you know, get any receipts back, but, you know, they were sent out on that. So other than that, if you had any further questions, or you wanted to look at the plans, or see what's going in, there you are. Sure. No, go ahead and read it. If there's anybody else with comments, this would be a time to, no, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask how he did hear about the meeting? Was it through the newspaper ad?
No, I received this hearing notice.
Well, that's.
That's a notice.
That's the notice.
Okay.
Yeah. You got that in the mail, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, that's what they send the abuttes. Yeah. Yeah, you don't get a, you know, a big set of plans or anything like that, no.
Actually, the majority of people notified were individuals in the condos in the back.
I know it, yeah. It.
A lot of letters.
It makes it a lot of letters when you have those new condos going in there, yes. No, no further questions, okay. If there's no further questions then from the public, I will close the public portion of this meeting. And if anybody on the board has any questions, if not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, David.
I move that the Board of Appeals approve the petition in case 1501 of MBA Building Group and Alan Capanella to grant the special permit under, it's technically 6381B, if we want to be technical about what section it is, of the zoning bylaws in order to construct a new, single-family dwelling on a non-conforming lot located in an S-20 district on the property located at 92 Curtis Street, Reading, Mass. As depicted on Certified Plot Plan dated December 8th, 2014, and stamped by John D. Sullivan III, 22 Mount Vernon Road, Barksford, Mass. And as depicted further on elevation drawings, unnumbered, but attached to the petition.
Right. Did I not hear him, one of the gentlemen, say that one of those was changed?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, great. You know, this would be right.
Strike that as.
You can see that, yeah.
As also depicted on elevation drawings, amended elevation drawings dated January 13th, 2015, by Donahue Design and Construction LLC and MBA Building Group LLC. Pages 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Under the following conditions. One, the petitioner shall submit to the building inspector a certified plot plan of the proposed construction and proposed foundation plans prior to the issuance of a foundation permit for the work. Two, the petitioner's final construction plans for the new structure shall be submitted to the building inspector along with the as-built foundation plans prior to the issuance of a building permit. And three, the petitioner shall submit as-built plans to the building inspector showing the completed construction immediately after the work is completed and prior to the issuance of an occupancy permit. So moved.
We have a second here from Mr. Drimmer. Is there any further comment? If not, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Record go. Special permit is granted. Vote of 5-0-0. And we have 14 days to write up that decision, and we will submit that with the town clerk. And then there's a 20-day appeal period for many abuttes on that. Okay. So let me write up these, that we granted you a special permit on it, and I'll give you these for your copy, a copy for you, and you can be done. Be done with us, anyway. Okay, there is a set of the plans. Thank you.
And if I could have a copy of the every plot plan, two sides?
I do, I do.
Yeah, I would need that. Thank you. Thank you for bearing with us here while I get my paperwork done. Okay. We're going to start. Next case on the agenda tonight is case number 1502. And we have that applicant here? Yes, thank you. Now, let me go ahead and read the legal notice, and we will proceed from there. The zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing in the Selectman's Meeting Room at the Town Hall, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on Thursday, January 15th, 2015, at 7:00 p.m. on the petition of Carolyn A. Parker, who seeks a variance under Section 6.3.3/6.2.5.E of the zoning bylaws in order to remove six manual pump toppers and to install six LED pump toppers with Smart Pay Alternator on the property located at 303 Salem Street, Reading, Massachusetts. Unless there is an objection, I will dispense with the reading of the abuttes list, except to say that the abuttes were notified, as were the following: Board of Selectmen, Town Clerk, Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, Conservation Commission, Health Department Assessors' Office, Engineering Division, CPDC, members and associate members of the Board of Appeals, as well as the planning boards of Wakefield, Linfield, North Reading, Stonemont, Woburn, and Wilmington. Testimony given before this board is taken under oath. So if you may, think you may want to speak tonight, please stand, raise your right hand, and I'll swear you're in. I swear that the testimony given by me before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth. Responses, I do. Thank you. Floor is yours, if you'd like to give us an oversight of what you plan.
My name is Carolyn Parker. I'm here representing Cumberland Farms. Cumberland Farms has started what they call a Smart Pay program. The Smart Pay program allows customers, if they are a member, to get 10 cents off a gallon of gas. The two ways that Cumberland Farms normally, you know, wishes to advertise for the Smart Pay is one, through their main pylon sign, where if it was LED, that they would put this alternator strip in, and the prices would alternate. Standard is eight seconds. This particular site has what we call a scroller price sign. The scroller price sign is more of a mechanical sign. It's not LED, it's not, in a little way, an LED sign. The other way that they want to advertise is through the pump toppers. The pump toppers are the prices that are on the dispenser. Their requirement by the state of Massachusetts, you know, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they are not required to be LED. They are currently manual. But what Cumberland Farms would like to do is to change out the manual pump toppers, install LED pump toppers, and then incorporate the Smart Pay program into the pump toppers. The setting, as I mentioned, the standard setting that Cumberland Farms has been using is eight seconds. The setting can be changed from zero to 60 seconds. The pump toppers are mainly for the customer at the pump. They are not meant to be seen from the roadway. The standard brightness or setting for pump toppers and for all their LED signs is a 6. So if 10 is the brightest, a 6 is kind of halfway. We can reduce the setting down to 2. If we go below 2, the bulbs will just burn themselves out, and then we constantly have to change the bulb. And what happens when it reduces is the bulb gets smaller, so therefore the brightness isn't as bright. We also, since I've been doing these for about a year and a half now, and basically down to the last 40 or 50 locations that require me to go to a hearing, I'm learning a lot, especially from towns that do not appreciate or want the LED signs. And I have gotten some approvals from towns that normally wouldn't approve LED. What we've come up with is that on the pump topper, we also can put a layer of film on the pump topper, which will also diminish the brightness once again. So, you know, we have been trying to work with towns and learning as we go to, you know, make things, I do have a video if someone, I don't know, are you familiar with the, with the Smart Pay and the pump toppers?
I took a look at the Brennew Station over at the Head of Power. You have them there?
Yes. Do, you know, do you have feelings, or do you have any comments? I do have a video if someone's not familiar with it, if you'd like to see it.
I'm comfortable.
And as I mentioned, they're not close to the roadway right now currently. In order to change the prices, which, at least they're going in the right direction, right? When I'm, when it's 379, I got to come in front of you guys, it's not as easy. So when we have to change the pump toppers right now, they have to put combs on the lanes, they have to shut the lanes down, then the people have to go out and manually change the prices. Currently, they can change the prices on the canopy from within the building. We're just looking to be able to do the same with the pump toppers. You know, weather like this, icy weather, you know, cold weather, the people have to go out there and still, you know, change the things. And Cumberland Farms has, and there have been reported injuries from some people, you know, getting hit or whatever. So, you know, it is new technology. The reason we don't propose a scroller for this is because the mechanism is just too large to be incorporated into such a small pump topper. They are going to remain the same exact size as what's currently there. The electricity is taken off of the pump, you know, to install them. You know, they are a benefit to the public to tell them of the lower prices. You know, it gets them to say, why is this changing? They go in the store, they become a member. I was just in Cranston, Rhode Island, and it was 2:05. I was like, whoa, which is pretty good. So I don't, if you have any questions? So I don't, if you have any questions, I can answer any question.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of clarifications for you on, on the posting. You had sought a variance under section six point three point three. That's under the current bylaws. So six point three point three is, is basically a...
I thought six point two point three. I have six point two point three. He said it was a number of signs allowed.
Oh, on mine, it looks like six point three.
On the legal notice that we were provided in the mail. That's a typo.
Oh, yeah, it's a typo.
Right, on the, I'm looking for the application. The application says six two three and six two five E.
Okay, that's, that's where my mother...
And I'm looking at the Glenn's denial letter too, so it's consistent.
So we assume that it's six two three.
And you know, normally when they were manual or are manual, they were just a requirement from the state. They were never considered a sign. Once you want to light them up, you know, that's why we're going through the proper, you know, process to have them be reviewed, get denied, and then come and see whatever.
I had one other question, clarification.
Okay.
Under, the other relief you saw was a variance under six point two point five point E. I was wondering if you were aware of the section six point two point, six point four point one, which specifies for business D districts. There is a procedure that one must follow. And under the... Well, I mean...
Six point two point four point...
Six two four six four one.
I, I can only file what I've denied by, so I don't know what the, what the question is.
Well, that's, in that, it specifies it's a certificate of appropriateness to Community Planning and Development Commission. And it specifies that in business D districts, that you must first apply to CPDC for an appropriate certificate before you move to the building inspector. They have forty-five days to review this. After the forty-five days, you can then go within a twenty-day period if they deny you, deny you. Then it goes to the Board of Selectmen. So it's a different process. I didn't know if somehow this got diverted or, or what, but...
What section is that in?
Six two six four one.
Six two six...
Four one. One thirty-one.
All right, page one thirty-one of the old, the old bylaws.
Is that something that can be done afterwards?
We'll, we'll discuss it with the building inspector here right now, the code enforcement office, and see which route we're going here.
In the, in the application for the permit, I mean, it is identified in here on one of the pages that you have to submit to the CPDC before you go to the building inspector. I mean, it's clearly written in the, in the application.
Well, I, I, as I was reviewing that, I just got down, I was the fifth up the past that, and I picked that up. And I didn't know if somehow we kind of averted the process or... Pardon me? In, in the package that you prepared...
Not offhand.
Under, under that section, six two six four one.
Okay.
First sentence.
Yeah. No, no, we'll, we'll say here.
Now, I, I know that what you're talking about applies to basically service stations, gas stations. And normally, if we weren't in a B, a business B zone, I mean, you wouldn't probably be talking about this particular section. But this particular section applies in business B zoning districts. Why, why this applies in business B zoning districts, I have no idea.
And not others, yeah.
I came and asked about that this afternoon to Jesse and...
Yeah.
She, she mentioned that, she didn't know what it was either, but the intention was that Zach was not going to, was not going to tackle signed bylaws under, and nor will they be tackling it in November.
Well, obviously Glenn has worked with this for a number of years. Glenn, you might have some comments on this procedure?
I overlooked this section of the bylaw for this particular application, but, so... But the, the CPDC can't issue them a variance. They can approve the design. So technically, she needs, she needs the relief from ZBA, but before she can actually do that sign, she'd have to get that design approved with CPDC. And then they'll talk about the film or the brightness.
Yeah, yeah.
If they're concerned with it.
And evidently, this is what John's talking about. Then we need the letter from CPDC in regards to the appropriateness.
Right.
Letter of appropriateness.
I think that the application for the number of signs that's not allowed could be approved.
Yeah.
But she can't, they can't actually, I can't actually issue the permit until we go through this certificate, certificate of appropriateness.
I apologize that I missed that, because no one told me.
Sure, no, no.
Otherwise, I would have got them out to them.
Understand.
Okay.
I should have told you that.
Understand.
I'm a busy guy, I know, when I drop the application off.
So we're telling you now. But, so I still don't think, I don't think it's a waste of, she needs both.
Yeah.
If, if, if the sign application complied, she'd have to go to CPDC to get permission for the appropriateness. But they can't go to CPDC for a variance.
No, no, she'll have to come back here after she gets through. And that, I think that's what, basically what the bylaw is saying, that's the procedure to go through.
So were we to act favorably on the application for a variance, it would have to be conditioned upon CPDC approval.
We could do that, yeah.
But, once the variance is granted, it becomes part of the record, and it attaches to the property. So let's presume, let's presume that we, that we act favorably on the application for a variance regarding relief from the number of sign limitation. Are we then not going to act on the LED portion?
Well, I think that, I didn't bring that portion of it up now, because my question was, what do we do with this aspect of it before we move forward?
Right.
I had some questions on the other aspect of it for the variance, but first, I think we need to determine what the direction is that we move. So, that's, I guess what I'm asking. How does the board want to move forward on, on this? Because the letter of appropriateness has sequential options. If they do not, well, it's not that they're not going to rule on it in the forty-five day period, but the other thing is if they, they say no, then it goes to the Board of Selectmen for an overruling for the appropriateness, then it comes back to this board for the various aspect of it.
Right, whereas if we do it the other way around, the variance attaches while it's going through the CPDC and perhaps Board of Selectmen process. And the variance attaches because the appeal period runs,
Right.
no matter how we condition it at that point in time, the, the variance attaches.
Yeah, yeah.
So basically, I'm, I was going to give them this whole same package. So I just needed seven more copies, which I didn't know I needed.
And, and a certificate from the CPDC, whether or not they wanted to have a hearing on that is, is...
Is up to them.
Entirely up to them.
So...
But they could do a limited review if they so chose, and then just nullify us.
I don't, I don't know what the, what is that anyway? What, what are they?
The planning commission?
It's planning, the planning board. That, that's what we call it in Reading. CPDC is the planning board.
Like, that sounds so technical.
Yeah, planning board.
I, I, you know, I've gone to planning board and zoning board, and sometimes the planning board wants to know what the zoning board thinks prior to me going there. You know what I mean?
We do it the other way around.
In this particular case, it's the other way around.
So...
I, I just had a quick question, David, and maybe Glenn knows too, but obviously, I haven't seen the new bylaws. I don't know, will the new bylaws revamp the signage? And obviously, electronic signage is, is much more in use now than it was when the bylaws were originally done ten years ago, fifteen years ago.
The proposed revisions that I believe are still under revision to the portion of the zoning bylaw rewrite that's scheduled for the special April town.
Okay, so this isn't, this isn't anything to do with what's before the Attorney General right now, the signing. So it's still the old signing.
The process was bifurcated. Only half of the zoning bylaw rewrite went before the November town meeting. None of the artic, none of the articles before November town meeting spoke to signs. They were tabled for April's town meeting, along with parking and a couple others.
Any, any changes to the signing bylaw will be coming up at the April town meeting. And again, that would be approved, and then have to go to the Selectmen's office, and then the Attorney General's office. So we're talking a summer before anything...
Presuming it passes at town meeting.
If it passes, right. Okay, thank you.
Are you proposing to allow LED? What, certain signs?
I, I know there was some discussion related to LED signage. I know that town council was very interested in the section on signage and the proposed changes. So I don't, I can't answer your question definitively whether or not the proposal was to allow LED signs, but I know there was some discussion. I don't know, I don't know that the proposal that will ultimately be vetted by town council for presentation in April will include a section on LED.
And I apologize, like, normally you'd have two different applications that you would have. So I must have just read right by there.
No, no, I, no, it's understandable. Seems like there was some information left out on the whole side here.
Okay, so it, it looks, I don't know what the thoughts are on the board here. It looks like there's one option where we, certainly we could act tonight, as you mentioned, David, and put a amendment to the decision, a caveat.
But there is, there's a problem to that that David mentioned, because the clock starts running.
Number two, we could, we ask to get the applicant is open to a continuation, but then the continuation may run beyond, what do we have, sixty days to render a decision on this from, from tonight? Or number two, you could withdraw without prejudice, and then resubmit a whole new application when you're ready, but...
Do we know when the planning board meets? Because obviously, I don't need to do a butters for that, and I have the package already done. It's just a matter of getting them copies.
They, they may not even need to meet.
I, I think the thing for you to do is if you decide that we could continue this...
Then get their, get their comments, and then come back?
And come down and speak to, I would guess it would be the town planner, is where I would start, and...
Jesse Wilson.
Yeah. And, and explain your...
So it might be a matter of just sending him a scanned bunch, and he sends it out to the people and...
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It could be.
It could, it could be that, it could be that...
Could be as simple as that.
Uncomplicated.
When is the next zoning meeting?
Planning board, the zoning board?
What if I continued it?
February the fifth.
Let's see, we have, yeah, February open, pretty much February.
Sorry, I'm filling up the table.
No, we're, you're the only...
I know you said you were free.
February fifth and February nineteenth. February fifth might be a little early, but the nineteenth, you could maybe continue to...
If I don't have to have a hearing, I mean, then I can just tell you that I have to have a hearing.
Well, we don't know that, so I mean, we have to move it to a date certain.
I know, I already, I'm just doing a lot of hearings.
And, and actually...
I don't know if I can...
You know, and I, I think knowing the flavor of this board, to be honest with you, I don't see a big issue with this change. The pumps signs are staying the same size. You have pump signs there now. I know they're going to LED, the pumps all over the place do LED now. But as you said, this is something you can explain to the planning board in regards to intensity of the lighting, et cetera.
How many people have to approve me, three or...
At the planning board?
If I, if I didn't continue?
Ooh, for a variance, it would have to be four.
Super majority.
Yeah. Four out of the five that are voting tonight. I don't, you know, and, and I can't speak for everybody else.
I don't want to get denied when I can do one other step and get continued. I, I'm thinking that I, I, I don't have a hearing the fifth.
I would say the fifth might be...
Too early.
You, you could do it the fifth, and then, and then if you, if you can't make it, you send a letter.
I'm doing like two or three days away.
Yeah, if, if you decided to do the fifth, which is about, what, three weeks from tonight?
Right.
And you couldn't do it, you could ask, send a letter saying...
Send a letter saying, yes, I need to...
Yeah, we need more time, we can't do it. Can we reassign the case to February nineteenth or to March? Yeah, the first, first Thursday in March.
And if you find that it gets too complicated, and you start running up against our timelines, you could always send in a notice of withdrawal without prejudice, if, if you get stuck somewhere. I don't anticipate that being...
I believe we've done it before too, David. The applicant request, can request an extension of the sixty-day period, can she not, John?
Yes, David, I was just in Tewksbury, and they wrote a letter to me, and they...
As long as it's the applicant that requests that sixty-day extend, or that extension from sixty days.
Yeah, I suppose that, yeah, we did, yeah.
That could be done too.
Could be.
Well, I, in talking to Jesse this afternoon, I've got a couple of other things that she mentioned. Now, I don't know, I, I don't think there's any major decisions that's cast in stone, but I understood that the, that for the April town meeting, they're, they're, they... I can't tell you who they is, because I don't know who they is, are reconsidering whether they will go forward on signed bylaw changes at all. So that's, that's one question.
We have a Zach meeting on the twenty-eighth of January where I think some of that...
Is Jesse the town planner?
Uh, she's the assistant staff, yeah, staff planner. I know, she's got a long time after, after her game. She's a go-to person. She's forgotten more about this stuff than we know.
All right, so I'd like to be...
So, so it sounds like right now, yeah, not even, you know, the April meeting for new signed bylaws are...
Yeah, and I know that...
Someone will gamble on that anyway.
Yeah.
Well, right, and I have all the, all the towns that they're like, oh, in six months, we're going to change that. Well, and then it's been, I, I've been doing this since last April, as far as the smart pay. So, you know, we're down to the gritty, if I could say.
It takes time sometimes, especially when you have to have various boards and meetings, town meetings to approve things, you know.
Trying to make that easier, by the way, as part of the revision and rewrite.
So I'd like to be continued to February, that, because in my brain, I don't have a hearing that night.
And if it becomes an issue...
But that could change, I'll just write a letter.
Let's see, we have, yeah, February fifth or February nineteenth. You would like to continue to February fifth?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll check when I get home, I should bring that with me.
Sure. Yeah, and typically, this board meets the first and third Thursdays of every month.
There's no guarantees.
So we have the fifth of February and the nineteenth of February for our two meetings. Okay, so we, we have a request in front of us now from the applicant for a continuation of her case to February fifth. Do I hear a motion on that?
She's got a question, what do you got, Tony?
Oh, okay, I'll open it up for public comment. Name and address, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Tony Gerezo, one thirty John Street.
Okay.
I apologize for being late. Were there any mention on whether the new LED signs would actually have commercials with sound?
I, I, I believe in her presentation, she mentioned that they would not. No, they, it just would be prices. She says, there's not enough room to put messages and videos and stuff.
A lot of commercials while you're filling your tank.
Right, that was in her presentation. And to be honest with you, Tony, we did not get into, board members did not get into the technical aspects of it, we've been going through the procedures in regards to the application on this, and...
That's all right, I've seen them at other local stations. I think the, I think the board might want to remind the applicant of the town bylaw referring to loud speakers.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, thank you.
So he, what, what he might be talking about is the dispenser itself?
Yes.
The dispenser's probably talking to them, and...
Well, we've had dispensers that give commercials over it, play music, et cetera, et cetera. Is that what you're talking?
And that, that's just the way the dispensers are coming.
Yeah.
You know, if this is going to be determined on that, we'll shut them off. But they have, the screen has to be there because it's communicating with the person at the pump in the store.
Well, I think this is where you will get your direction from CPDC when you go there in regards to the, the brightness of the LEDs, in regards to sounds, water... and in regards to sounds, volumes, loudspeakers. I didn't see any mention of it in your application that there would be that.
Yeah, I wouldn't even have known to bring it up.
I was under the impression reading the application here that it would just be a change from printed signage to LED signage in regards to gasoline prices, period. But that's what we would need then, is a letter of appropriateness from CPDC.
Sorry I didn't read. I don't know why, he must have just stopped reading.
Or CPDC gives the town staff planner the ability to write a letter, and, you know, we would, I believe, accept that too.
I would accept that too.
Okay. Okay, that's it, Tony, I'll close the public hearing then. And it sounds like then she is going to be going to CPDC and having to get something there, or she'll be talking to the town planner in regards to that. And we need a letter of appropriateness from CPDC in regards to...
Moving forward on the various aspect of it.
Yeah, we haven't even...
We haven't even discussed that.
We haven't given the merits of the variance yet. We want to make sure you get your procedural...
Oh, we have to talk about it, no.
Okay, so we...
Do we need, what do we need to do to approve the continuance? Have we?
I think we need a motion and a second.
Okay. Motion to allow the continuance of case 1502 to February 5th, pending CPDC.
Okay, for the purpose of?
Yeah, for the purpose of allowing the applicant to seek a certificate of appropriateness from the CPDC.
Do I hear a second from Mr. Jurim or a second? All those in favor of the motion? Okay, thank you. Hopefully, we'll see you back here February 5th then.
Yeah.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
The planning board is now meeting twice a week, I understand?
News to me.
This is what Jesse told me today too. I was surprised to hear that.
I don't know if there's a calendar?
I don't know what days they're meeting, though. I didn't bother asking, I mean, I just was concerned.
I know they submitted the, well, we'll get to the Zach stuff. Mr. Redfern, what would you like to do next?
I believe we have some minutes to review tonight. And I think that will pretty much take care of business.
Yes. Hey, watch out for those...
Yeah, watch out for the traffic jam tomorrow.
You see it on the TV?
Want to help you.
Unique way of getting themselves hooked together.
It certainly looked like it was well planned.
You had to really...
Okay.
Except the, down in Metford, they had planned to allow the, the quick lane to pass, except the traffic backed up so far that the ambulance that was trying to get an individual down, they couldn't even get to the...
The third line there, yeah.
So, they had to reroute the windows. We just heard that in the news tonight. Had to take the person to a...
I thought the ambulance was coming up from the south, from East End, and they had to reroute them back to Brockton to that hospital.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was not, no, but they were still using the zipper lane down there to get individuals.
Right, the zipper lane, right.
Wow.
And they couldn't get to the zipper lane.
Yeah. Okay, we have some, we have a final draft of the ZBA meeting minutes from December 4th, 2014. I don't know if anybody had a chance to review those. I know I did, and sent some comments into Maureen on that.
As did I.
And Will Held. Just make a quick check here, let's just come back in. Who requires? Future, up here. Oh, yeah, I think one I saw that had a lot, a couple of the votes were Eric instead of Kathleen there. They had Hagstrom instead of Hackett. I changed, I picked up on that and changed it. Looks like she caught that, and then the nimble, and the... So, it looks like my comments have been taken care of there. David's too. Anybody else have any comment?
I'll look on one.
Okay.
On page, let's see, one, second page.
Yeah.
One, two, three, fourth paragraph refers to Ms. Taylor as him. I think it's Mr. Taylor.
Ms. Taylor, it says, yeah. So, it should be a Mr. instead of Ms.
I don't know, I don't recall. I think it was, huh? It was a girl, then it should be her then.
Yeah.
Couldn't remember whether it was a guy or a girl.
Okay, I couldn't remember who it was, I made the comment. Okay, so it should stand as it is.
No, the last word, should be her.
Oh.
Instead of him.
Okay, neighborhood to him instead of, oh, okay. Very good. I will, anybody want to entertain a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes as modified.
Okay, do I have a second? Second, all those in favor? 500, thank you so much. I don't believe we have any other business on the agenda tonight. And I would accept a motion to adjourn. Oh, was that on the agenda? Oh, yeah, it is, Zach report, yes.
We'll make it short.
Okay.
The Zach's charter expires on February 28th. We have scheduled one meeting, I think a final meeting on January 28th with all the members of the Zach to go over what future plans lie ahead for the zoning bylaw rewrite. Perhaps even an update on the status of the Attorney General's approval of currently approved amended zoning bylaw. I know the Attorney General already approved the historic district.
Historic district, we came by it real quick.
And I think they submitted that separately to get it done more quickly rather than do it as a package.
Well, Jesse indicated this afternoon that they've accepted the, Attorney General has accepted everything that was done in September, which includes the marijuana, the changes in the overlay districts for the wetlands, everything that you proposed during September.
Right, but I also understand that the Attorney General's approved the historic district that was...
Yes.
Was proposed and approved at town meeting in November, beginning of the November town meeting. So, I understand that that might have been...
Yeah, that's been published in the paper that it was accepted.
Yeah, but the zoning bylaw rewrite has yet to be accepted by the Attorney General. So, maybe we'll get some insight on that. Other than that, we'll see what the town has in store for the zoning bylaw rewrite come April.
Okay. Thank you, David.
Sure.
Any other business? If not, I would accept a motion to adjourn. So moved, do I have a second? Second from David? All those in favor? 500, thank you so much.
Thank you.